Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Let's start off with just a quick pause here, and those that would like to join me, please bow your heads as we begin our meeting. Father, we just thank you for this opportunity. We have to go about doing cities business. We ask that you be with us in all our decisions. Be with all our city workers, to keep them safe and in your will. A special thanks to all of those that had Dan Fitzpatrick on your mind for healing, and he's doing very well at home. And so, we just thank you for that, and ask you to be with us in his name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Councilman Fitzpatrick is excused. Councilman Tibbs, Councilwoman Bench, Mayor Protem O'Neil, Councilman Klorus, Councilwoman Moore, Councilman Balls, Councilman Clark, Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present and one excused.
And before we start, just remind our audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking or any other actions that might interrupt the meeting. Tonight, right now is a very good time. Take your cell phones, please. Let's just check them to make sure that they're on vibrate or turned off for that. So, appreciate that. So, and gentlemen, please remove your hats in the chamber, please. And to our city clerk?
Yes, we're at announcements. Yes, I do have one. As a reminder, on March 16th, our next regular city council meeting will be Student Government Day, and the meeting will convene at 12:00 noon rather than the 6:00 PM starting time. And with that, the filing deadline for any personal appearances will be Friday, March 13th, at 4:00 PM.
So, next council meeting here at 12:00 noon.
Yes.
And it's our Student Government Day, and many of the schools will be representative. So, that's good. Council members, you did get a, you should've got an itinerary of what the whole schedule is for the day. So, other than the city council meeting, if you want to join us during that day, you certainly are welcome to do that. And tonight, we would normally begin with our council remarks, since we have no personal appearances. Is that correct?
Yes, there are no personal appearances, so your next order of business are the remarks of council.
And since Councilman Dan Fitzpatrick, and for the rest of yous here, Councilman Fitzpatrick is resting at home very comfortably, going through the normal healing process after his surgery. So, it's gonna be just a little bit longer before he has any visitors. So, please keep him in your thoughts, and we're just so glad everything else worked out well. That moves us over to Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but other than saying I'm happy to hear Mr. Fitzpatrick is doing well, I have nothing to say.
Very good. Then Councilman Michael Ball?
Thank you. Good evening, citizens, everybody that's here. I'd like to thank you for coming and sharing these meetings with us. I don't have a lot to share this evening, but I would like to remind everybody about the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Great Lake Bay Region is having a bowl-a-thon coming up. If anybody were interested in donating, go online and look up Big Brothers, and you can find out what's going on. It's one of the biggest fundraisers of the Big Brothers program. It's how we normally take care of all our littles and things that we do and that nature by our bowl. Other than that, I don't really have too much to say this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Balls, you're taking requests for your bowling. Are you gonna be bowling yourself? And...
No, sir, I'm not gonna be bowling.
Okay, no pledges, then?
No pledges. My little brother will be in Florida.
Okay.
At Disney World. He didn't take me, so...
He didn't take you?
So, we're not gonna bowl.
Might be something to look at in the future. Councilwoman Van De Mar.
Good evening to me, everyone. Not very much to say this evening, other than thank you all for coming and stay warm. Thank you.
Councilman Larry Klorus?
I have no comments on it.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'd like to express appreciation to the First Ward Community Center for having a Great Taste of Soul event. A lot of members of councils were there. It's one of the premier events during Black History Month at the First Ward Community Center. Very well attended. A lot of city staff were there as well. So, Mr. Simple, he had a big plate of ribs, and I asked him if he took care of them. He said he did, so... But, very well attended event, and it's for the program to make sure kids have something to do after school. So, very pleased to have been there. So, that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Annie Bench?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to send my well wishes to Councilman Fitzpatrick, and I also would like to congratulate First Ward on another successful fundraiser. It was a lovely event, as Mayor Protem O'Neil has said. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Just a few congratulations or recognition. I know it's been a while, but you won the Mrs. Jones and the OMB office for their distinguished budget and presentation award. A great job. I think that was a couple of years in a row. There's a couple of officers who were promoted. Officer Gass, Matt I, and Bell. Congratulations on your long-time service. Gilbert Rivera, he was elected Vice President of the Hispanic-Latino Commission, a statewide office. It gives the city another presence in a statewide, or excuse me, in a commission or organization that has a statewide presence. One Week One Street, they're relentless. They're having another meeting to discuss the old state fairgrounds. I wish them all the luck, and whatever I can do to help, don't hesitate to call me. There's a new business in the city of Saginaw, You Me Paint. I guess you can rent the place, and you can do personal art. It's in the Old Town District at 804 South Hamilton. They had a great Valentine event there, and it was a nice setting for friends and family to just spend some time together in the city of Saginaw. First Ward did a great job with their Taste of Soul, has several of our council members and city was present. I would also like to recognize the fire department, their effort. I guess I would just, would know what the city would do without your presence. There was a, could've been a pretty horrific or dangerous fire at high-rise, and as always, professional and teamwork and effort, and what could've been a horrific situation was somewhat contained. Thank you for your service, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, once again, thank you for everyone for attending. Couple of things I'd like to just make comment on. I did attend the, what we call the Fairgrounds Meeting today. We had federal and state and our city officials there, meeting with and brainstorming of the old fairgrounds and trying to make that into a real nice, impressive green zone over there with activities for families and so forth. So, that's an ongoing project that one, you know, One Week One Street is kinda heading up that now. So, we had some very good dialogue today on that, and looking forward to some things happening maybe in the near future. Our Saginaw Art Museum, a beautiful place, is having their fundraiser this weekend, and so that also goes on besides the Big Brothers and Sisters Program. So, we like to support those local ones. My hat's off to the Saginaw Housing Commission and all those involved with that fire, our Saginaw Fire Department, and all those were involved in the fire that we had at the high-rise. Boy, there was no loss of life. Some people did receive some medical care, but they're back into the high-rise and they're doing well. Which brings me to my next item is, close and dear to my heart, is the American Red Cross, and they played important part of that also. We have, our fire department many times has to refer city residents who have fires to the American Red Cross. March is National American Red Cross Month, so this month, a lot of activity is going on with that, and so they play a very important part in our community. We don't, sometimes we think of national disasters, but even just a house fire in the city of Saginaw, people are displaced. The American Red Cross are there to help them out temporarily until they can get some things. So, we're very, very pleased. And as you know, that they have consolidated the Great Lakes Bay Region. They've closed the office in Bay City. They've closed the office in Midland, and those are all consolidated over in the 1200 Block of North Michigan. So, we're very fortunate that they have chose to be right here in the city of Saginaw for their Great Lakes Bay Region. So, that speaks very highly of our city and the importance they have a presence here. So, we're very, very pleased with that. So, with those comments, we're next to move on. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Reports of Manager.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have some reports for?
Yep. Few updates first, and then we have a presentation tonight. I wanted to let council know that the mayor, Mayor Protem, and I did meet with Congressman Kildee Wednesday following the last council meeting. So, I think it was a good meeting, and again, same with our local legislators. If you have issues that you want us to relay to him, I'm sure we can set up future meetings, or perhaps if additional council members want to attend, we can look into doing that as well. And I also wanted to mention, as Councilman Tibbs did, it was a little over a week ago, we had three police promotions promoted to Lieutenant Craig Bell, and then to Sergeant Jeff Matt I and Steve Gass. And this is going to help us with our overtime in the long run. So, it's something that Chief and I talked about doing, and felt that this was the right time to do that, given the situation we are with our staffing levels. And we'll continue to work with COM on finalizing their contract as well. But this is something that we felt was a good time to do. So, congratulations to those three on their promotions, and I think they're gonna do a great job, all three of them. And I often get asked for updates on some of the developments in the city, and so I wanted to let everyone know that Delta College is still working on their site location for their downtown Saginaw facility. They expect to have something final within the next few months, but I also wanted to let you know this type of support that we're getting, or Delta College is getting, from legislators from Midland County, Bay County, and Saginaw County is outstanding. They're all standing together on building this and getting funding for it in the city of Saginaw. So, I wanted to let you all know that as well. And then, finally, I like to let council know, and also department heads, when I get comments from the public, but I was approached by Paul Chafee at the Saginaw Future Awards, and he wanted to make sure that the city knows that Mike Hagan is volunteer, contacted him about helping with the light-up-the-chapel's project, and Mike took it on himself to volunteer to help out with that, and wanted to help and just wanted to get permission before he did it. So, Paul Chafee said to let the department know and council know that Mike Hagan is stepping up and doing those kind of things on his own. So, Mike's always been great to work with, and he'll take on any project. So, wanted to let everyone know that as well. And additionally, the police and consumers and all of the other sponsors are starting to work on Light Up the City now. So, you'll be hearing more about that, and probably as we get closer to June, we'll have something here at council. This Thursday, I believe, at the Chamber of Commerce Percolator Breakfast is kind of an overview of that as well, if you're interested in going to that. I know Councilman Klorus will be going, so, to help get support again from the business community in the area. And one, we often congratulate areas that are doing things to help promote themselves or help fund themselves, similar to the Bid District in Old Town. So, our office was contacted by the Saginaw Valley Police Canine Association, and Officer Stacer, one of our canine officers. The organization has been a big help to the city for our canine officers, and helps raise funds and pay for pretty much our whole program as far as the dog, taking care of the dog, and training classes, veterinary bills, that type of thing. So, I'd like to bring up Officer Stacer and Jody Wilk, who is the Director of Saginaw Valley Police Canine Association.
We want to first thank you for allowing us a few minutes to fill you in on the different things that we've been doing, the money that we've spent, and pretty much how we've kept the canine program going for the Saginaw Police Department. I am Jody Wilk, and this is Doug Stacer and Jeff Wenzel, the two canine units for the Saginaw Police Department. So, the Saginaw Valley Police Canine Association first came around because in 2013, the council was faced with a very difficult decision with some budget cuts for the Saginaw Police Department. And with that, there was some concern that we were gonna lose the canine program here in the city. So, our primary mission is to first keep the Saginaw Police Canine Programs going, and then also to possibly even reach out to other departments to help with their requests or their needs for canine programs. In addition to the providing the funding and keeping the programs going, there's a few other things that we also do as a result. We're always constantly educating the public on what police canines do and why they're beneficial for the public. It is also providing positive public relations with the police, for the police department, and then also it's building bridges with the youth. Too often, we see where there's kids who are afraid of the police, and we want them to be able to turn to the police as opposed to running away or being afraid of them. So, in the community relations that we do, we help build those bridges and repair any possible concerns that they might have. So, in order to do that, we had to collaborate. I'm from the Standish area. I'm not from Saginaw. So, we first contacted the Saginaw Police Department. We sat down with the administration and explained what we wanted to do. I've been keeping the Aronet County Sheriff Canine Program going, for going on five years now, so I had a little bit of fundraising experience. And then, we also had the support of the two canine units here, willing to donate their time, basically volunteer, majority of the time. They're not getting paid for the events that we do. We also then contacted the Saginaw Community Foundation. We needed a reliable and trustworthy program to place our money. We wanted businesses to be able to donate, and individuals to donate with confidence, knowing that the money is being taken care of, it's not being used, that it's being used appropriately. So, and then we've also built relationships with the area neighborhood associations, particularly the Southwest Saginaw Neighborhood Association, and then canine associations across the country, not just in Michigan, but California, Arizona, Georgia, all over, all over the country. We've learned what they're doing there, what works for them, and how they might work for So, the benefits of a canine unit. Dogs can clear a room faster. It's a little bit safer for the people. They can, seven times faster than a human, they're able to clear a room. They can search a building within 10 minutes, whereas it would take a human three to four hours. They can indicate narcotics and explosives that humans can't scent. And then also, just the different areas that they can search. So, just some guidelines. You each have a packet, so just give you an idea of why we want canine units. Okay, so, a little bit about our handlers. Officer Wenzel, he is currently your community police officer for Quadrant Two. His canine partner is Kilo, who is a German Shepherd, was born November 8th of 2008, and they've been together since 2010. Both canine units are dual-purpose narcotics, which allows that, that means that they are able to detect narcotics, and then also, they're trained for apprehension. So, they can track people, missing people, or fleeing suspects. Officer Stacer is currently going through the School Resource Explorer Program, correct? And is also a canine instructor at Delta College. His canine partner is Canjo, who is with us tonight. Born August 10th, 2010. They've been together since October 2011, and he, too, is a dual-purpose narcotics canine.
Midnight shift. Well, we work in the dark the best time of the day.
So, in addition to the work that they do with the canines, they're also regular patrol. So, they kinda have double duty. To give you an idea of the canine units that are currently in Saginaw County, the sheriff's department has three. They have a dual-purpose narcotics, which would be the same as the two Saginaw police. They have a single-purpose narcotics, which means it's only allowed, or it's basically only trained to detect narcotics. And then they have a single-purpose explosives. That dog can only detect bombs. The Michigan State Police also has a few canine units. However, they pretty much cover the tri-county area. They're not just stationed in Saginaw. When they're home, when our canine units are home, they are oftentimes called upon if there's not another canine unit in the area. They may be called as an on-call basis to track somebody, or whatever the specific need is at the time. So, they're not just doing canine work. They are kinda double duty there. So, they are approximately responding to about 240 total, 240 canine calls each year. It may not seem like a lot, but also keep in mind that they are also your regular patrol officers. So, they're out there doing traffic stops, responding to calls. They, the different calls that they've been called to would be tracks, vehicle searches, different things, whatever they might need a canine for.
Just a little quick on that. Yeah, we run every call that everybody else does, and then if there's a canine call, we run to that. So, on our shifts, running the small amount of people that we have, we stay pretty busy. On my shift, I do, and I know on day shift, they have a lot going on, too. So, yeah, we write every call everybody else does, plus run every dog call. That, on my shift, I'm the only dog in the county. I stay in the city, but if something, like a bank robbery in Bertrand yesterday, they may call us out there to do a track. We stay in the city, though, and we're both, I'm a city resident, so when I get called out, I'm here, so...
In addition to the work that they do with the canines, they also seize narcotics, thousands of dollars in cash, drug money, and then the tracking of suspects, which is a huge, huge need for the area. So, what have we done for Saginaw since, since starting this? It's been about May 2013 when we've started covering all the expenses. I stopped in, it was, I believe, July of 2013, did a quick public comment saying, hey, we're covering all these expenses now. So, now I'm here to kinda show you and tell you what exactly we've done since then. So, we have secured dog food donations. We have contacted multiple businesses. The businesses in Saginaw have been absolutely generous, very supportive of the program. We've received a couple grants, one from the Saginaw Community Foundation, and one from a company called Foreign Print that allowed us to give out tattoo, temporary tattoos and coloring books to kids. We've had both canine patrol tajos painted. We've been to 50-plus community events across Saginaw County, and even outside of Saginaw County. Over 1,000 volunteer officers, which has been done primarily between three to four people. And we've pretty much saved the Saginaw Police Department $26,000 since 2013. I'll tell you a little bit more about what those were. So, our dog food donations, Kilo, Officer Wenzel's dog, his food is donated by Canada Pet Foods, and Canjo's food is coming from Y Song, which is actually a Midland-based company. So, for any of you who have pets, I highly recommend supporting the two wonderful companies that are providing food for both the dogs for their working life. The grants we've received. The Foreign Print Grant was a $500 mini-grant. Like I said, we had gotten coloring books and temporary tattoos to hand out to kids. And then, the Community Foundation Grant was actually the first grant that I had written. And with that, we purchased two heat alarms, two first aid kits, two sets of dog boots, a bite suit, and a behavior shaping device that's used for training. So, the heat alarm, thankfully, this was not one of our Saginaw vehicles, but to show you the importance behind the heat alarm, this was, I'm not sure what department or state he's from, Officer Will Harris had shared this picture of his patrol vehicle. He had, just like the two officers here, they, he also was a patrol officer and was responding to a complaint while he was inside the home. His canine partner was in the vehicle. The vehicle was running with the air conditioning, and he had an electrical fire in the patrol vehicle. The heat alarm will shut the vehicle off, roll the windows down, sound the horn, and activate the lights, alerting surrounding people that there's something wrong with the vehicle. He was able to get back to his vehicle to safely remove his canine partner. Thankfully, the only damage was to the actual vehicle and not to his partner. So, both vehicles now have those installed. They're approximately $700 each. This is Kilo showing off his dog boots. Just like us, the dog's paws are susceptible to cold, extreme temperatures, cold, heat, and also glass or chemicals, different things that they might be going into when they go into homes or businesses. He wasn't happy. When we first got him on, we made sure to videotape him because they, you know how cats are when they get something on their paws. The dogs are similar. The bite suit allows them to train for apprehensions, or if, the middle picture here, the, it was Officer Keshat wearing the bite suit, was pretending to attack Officer Stacer, and Canjo was protecting him. So, the bite suit will allow them to train to apprehend with any part of the body. Currently, or prior to the grant, the officers only had access to a bite sleeve, which would be just the arm. The behavior shaping device is actually, it looks like normal totes, storage totes. One of those has a launching mechanism that you can place the tennis ball on, and you also hide the narcotics in there. And it teaches the dog to focus more on the narcotics as opposed to the handler who has the reward. So, it also allows them to work off-leash and press the button on the remote to release the reward from a further distance.
That was at a demo at Gander Mountain, actually. We go all over, we're in Saginaw Township. We even leave the county once in a while, but this was one of the numerous demos that we do. He was showing them how he finds narcotics.
The biggest expense, we had contacted a couple businesses to see if they would be willing to repaint the tajos. They were currently white, or at the time, they were white. Officer Stacer works nights, and it's kinda difficult to be concealed when you're white like that, and the decals reflecting back. So, Draper Auto and Gary's Towing... So, uh, Draper Auto and Gary's Towing and Repair had generously, uh, which is, we figured it was a, approximately a five-thousand-dollar per truck job. Both trucks are now black. They matches the rest of the Saginaw Police Fleet, better concealment at night. Um, kind of gave them a, a fresh look, so. So, now we have two new, newly painted, look brand-new trucks. So, some of the things that we've been doing, um, we were mentioning, I mentioned before, the, the different events that we've participated in. We were at the Mid-Michigan Children's Museum. They asked us to, to come over and visit with the kids on their safety day. Uh, this is probably one of my favorite stories of all the different events that we've done. Officer Stacer had taken Canjo around the museum and sat down with a little boy, and for about ten minutes, they put together a puzzle. He didn't know at the time that this little boy had an extreme fear of police officers. I ended up talking to his grandma afterwards. She, she told me the whole story. She said she didn't understand why the boy was afraid. Uh, there were no family issues, police had never been called, anything like that. But after the ten minutes, she said that her grandson could not stop talking about the really nice police officer with his dog. So, it's building, fixing, repairing any of those fears that the kids might have with just a simple interaction. So, that was October of two thousand and thirteen. Uh, Johnson's Giant Pumpkin Farm, we've been there three, three times, I believe. Uh, we're actually working with them to possibly build a, put a building on their property to permanently do fundraising through there, sell the T-shirts and different things that we do. Um, each time we've been there, the crowds that have, have come around, that gives, gives visitors an opportunity to meet the dogs, talk to the officers, see the inside of the patrol vehicle, uh, again, just building the relations with the public. Uh, another, this particular picture, uh, Officer Stacer and Canjo were standing out in front of the tent, and this boy caught, saw Canjo, and immediately beelined right for him, which can sometimes be afraid, frightening, because little kids running up to the dogs, if it's not, if they're not paying attention, you know, or how far are they gonna go? Are they gonna jump on the dog, different things like that? He stopped about five feet short of Canjo, sat down. Canjo kind of looks at him, says like, what are you doing? Um, and then walked over and laid right next to him. And it was a, I'm glad it was busy, because I kind of get emotional and stuff like that, and probably would have started crying. Uh, I believe the boy had autism, or some sort of a disability, and to see the connection between him and Canjo was, was pretty amazing. Uh, Frankenmuth hosts their Dog Bowl every Memorial Weekend. This will be our third year going back. Um, we've worked very closely with the Zender family, uh, with, with the program. We are working on getting some demos set up for them to be part of the Dog Bowl program. KCQ, KCQ Country Fest on Ajibway Island was one of the first big events that we participated in. Uh, the first year we went, over a hundred thousand attendees. It allowed us the opportunity to share with the public. It's kind of the first time that they really got a chance to, to see a police off, a police canine unit. Hamilton Street Motor Fest was another highly successful, again, meeting with people. It, it's just really great to see the interactions. And then National Night Out, uh, in Saginaw Township at the soccer complex is kind of one of those, those events that we really want to be a part of, because it's all emergency personnel. The demonstrations that these officers do, they go to schools, daycare centers. Uh, they're gonna be here on the sixteenth for your, for your Student Government Day. Um, and again, these are primarily, they're doing these on their own time. There's not any compensation. They do it because they enjoy it, and they understand how, how important it is for kids to understand. Uh, this was, Officer Wenzel shared this. This was a survey that the students had taken last year at the Student Day, and just kind of highlighted the, the, the impact that the canine unit had. Uh, ninety-seven percent of the students said that that was their favorite part of the presentation, so. Um, a breakdown now of, earlier I had said that we had saved Saginaw twenty-six thousand dollars. Here's about where, here's how it all breaks down. The dog food for both of the dogs is roughly twelve-hundred dollars each dog, so twenty-four-hundred dollars a year. Thirty-six-hundred dollars a year in maintenance training is what the city used to be paying, that we now take care of. Uh, thankfully, we've not had any major health issues on the dogs, so vet care is low. Uh, roughly fifty-six-hundred dollars for the grant, a thousand dollars, um, for the e-collar training that allows them to work more with the, uh, the obedience and variety of training. Thousand dollars for pseudo-narcotics for them to train with. Uh, roughly ten thousand dollars for the new paint on the tajos. Uh, we won a contest on Facebook, which provided Officer Stacer with a fifteen-hundred-dollar piece of equipment that he's now able to safely and securely store any of his equipment in the back of his Tahoe. And then an additional eleven-hundred, almost twelve-hundred dollars in a variety of training equipment and safety equipment for the dogs. So, currently, we are financially secure. Should something happen to one of the dogs, uh, replacement canine is approximately twelve thousand dollars. We are prepared that if something was to happen to him, one of the dogs retires. Uh, the dogs are just like humans. They'll kind of let us know when they're done working. Um, it's gonna cost approximately twelve thousand dollars to replace. Uh, if there's any huge, large medical expense, we're prepared to cover that. And then also, any, uh, additional maintenance training or anything else that they might need. So, basically, in short, as long as the city of Saginaw and the Saginaw Police Department wants a canine program, you're secure. We will be here to make sure that they're going. Our future for us, we are currently a fund with the Saginaw Community Foundation. They hold our money. Uh, we would like to eventually break off, become a nonprofit on our own, so we could reach outside of Saginaw County. Several years back, Saginaw County had a program called Cops and Kids that provided the officers with books that they were able to hand out to kids that they came across. We would like to bring back a portion of that, maybe on a smaller scale, because our primary goal is to keep the dogs working and keeping everything covered through them. Bringing books back into the program or into the, to the community would just kind of be something extra. Not sure if we can go full-scale on it, but. Our current, uh, confirmed community events that we're gonna participate in will be the Dog Bowl. We'll, again, go back to Johnson's Giant Pumpkin Farm. Last year, we participated on a weekend at the Renaissance Festival in Holly, which was a huge success. And then, uh, also working with Kapoko Community Credit Union on setting up a five-K fundraiser for the program. So, that's kind of what we're looking at for this year. It's pretty much all that I wanted to share. I don't know if the officers have anything, anything to share.
We didn't really want to stop Jody midstream. Like, uh, she's a little triple-A and just won't let anyone take over for her. She'll shake her head, but it's true. Now, if anybody has any questions, let us know. I think she covered everything, maybe a little bit more than you thought. Uh, we thought it'd be about ten minutes, and it'd be about twenty, but, uh, just a little.
Council members, any questions? So, Councilwoman Ball, you look like you'd like to.
I don't know how you can see that on my face, but.
I got it. I, I could just see that.
But, uh. I'm sorry to bring this up, but I just got to know, um, Milton Hall incident, why they didn't let the dog go?
Why didn't they?
Yes.
I'll tell you, actually Jeff was there. I will tell you what would have happened, and this has happened all across the country. If the dog would have been released, as agitated as he was, he would have started stabbing the dog. The dog is a piece of equipment we'll replace, we'll grieve for a while, but we'll replace our dog. But I know what officers will do. I would hope that they wouldn't, but I, in that case, I think I know what would have happened. They would have still shot, and they would have not only, unfortunately, Milton Hall would have been deceased, but the dog would have as well. Now, could have the dog prevented it in that situation if the dog was behind him and could have come up on him? But it, but watching the video, he was so concentrated on the dog, he would have never allowed that to happen, so. You, you know, we train so much for that, that in that situation, I don't think it would have helped. Perfectly, that's just me personally, if I would have been in that situation. If the officers could have kept him, like, somewhat distracted to the front of him, and the dog had gotten behind him and went and grabbed his arm, that would have been perfect. But you could see, he, he was concentrated on the dog so much, so it was almost nearly impossible, I think. Um, so you would have ended up with shots still being fired, and now the dog being dead too. Um, and that, that has happened, there are videos all over. There are dogs that have been released, and they'll even, like, go to stab the dog, and the officers will kill the dog before it even reaches the person. So, that was a no-win situation, even with the dog, so.
I, I had to ask, because it, it keeps puzzling me, you know? I know we went through some litigation, and, you know, I'm thinking about the cost and, and the, uh, what happened to the city during that time, and. Uh, I just personally thought that it would have been better to let the dog go loose. So, that, that's my opinion. So, I, I just had to ask that question. But I thought you do, I thought the dogs normally attacked from the front.
Well, they will, any way that they can. But there are times we train in different scenarios and situations like that, that if you can send them from a location that maybe the bad guy or gal don't see, and they don't expect it, it would have eliminated it. But in that case, he knew, no matter where, we would have went to the back of him, he would have still known where it was at, so.
Thank you.
They're not puppies.
He is four and a half, and Jeff's, I believe, is six or six and a half.
What's the life expectancy?
It kind of depends on the dog. Even though Jeff's dog is older, he is smaller and a little bit more energetic. It's a lot more energy, so he may last longer. My dog's ninety pounds, eight, eight and a half years. I hopefully will get out of mine, uh, before he's replaced.
He looks friendly.
The average is ten, the average is seven to ten years.
Okay.
Kilo may be the first, well, size-wise, I don't know. They're kind of neck and neck, who would retire first? It really just kind of depends. So, we're, we're roughly, we're prepared for Kilo to be the first, based on his age, but, um.
But that don't have to be true.
No, that isn't.
Right.
Unfortunately, they, we've had a lot of dogs around the country this year get cancer, and so they retire early, and, you know, so, not gonna wood, that won't happen to our dogs. But, I mean, we plan for that financially, if that happens. You know, we train a lot of dogs, so we have replacements on hand whenever we need them to, so.
So, you actually have a dog in reserve right now?
Myself and some other people have a company, and we actually, uh, agencies come to us, and we pre-service the dogs, and, and agencies all over Michigan, we have supplied dogs to. So, we got dogs on the ground now that are ready to go if he was to go down, so.
He look friendly, but he got teeth. But he look friendly.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman, any bench?
Thank you so much for your efforts and to help us continue this program. Unfortunately, I was, when I was a victim of a robbery, um, they used the dogs. This is back in rookie's day, but, um, from my own personal experience, it was, it's very obvious how valuable this, this service is, and they were able to track the people who robbed me and, and caught them, and it was all because the dogs were brought in. So, I, I really appreciate your effort.
Yeah, we have our challenges in the city, but we know how important the program is. Like we said, we donate a lot of hours to, you know, we don't get paid for any of these events that we go to, because we feel so strongly how beneficial it is, not only just for the city, but just for the community and the kids all over. I mean, we've opened a lot of doors because of them. And, you know, someone calls and, hey, can you do a demo? We'll, we'll be there. You know, our staffing is maybe an issue, so if it's a day where we're working, maybe we won't be able to do it. But otherwise, I tell you, you know, people call us constant. They, they get on the Facebook page, and we've had calls at two-thirty in the morning, like Jody has. Hey, can you come and do this? And it's an out-of-state person. Uh, but our Facebook page, every day, we're updating and adding things to it. Um, yesterday, I got another thirty-one-hundred dollars on a traffic stop from a drug guy, and I did a track over on GM Property that was over a mile long and found the guy. So, we got things that we add constantly, but, uh, I mean, we're busy, summertime. Jeff and I don't get a break. We do a lot of tracking in the city, and we do a lot of car stops.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll give them tips.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. As a prosecutor, I see all the time how, yeah, canine units call, and it's, it's a, we're grateful that, uh, you being a city resident, you get to respond there real quick, and you solve a lot of, a lot of cases that way. And the fact that you're pretty much self-sufficient, that's a great thing as well. So, just thank you for your efforts.
Officer Stacer, in terms of the dogs, so you have a company, you have a good supply. So, do you, I mean, these are police dogs, but do you work with personal, family, adoption, or other?
Well, we have people that call us. We have dogs that people can't keep, so we will take them on and find homes for them. Um, one of the guys does a lot of civilian training. We now are venturing into the bedbug end of it. This past weekend, we were downstate. Four of us went down there to certify bedbug dogs. So, we're gonna have labs that we're gonna get, and we're gonna certify them in bedbugs, because people are begging to have them, civilians, and then even the hotels, it's a big thing now. Um, so, we're gonna venture into that, so. I used to work a lot of overtime, and there is a lot of overtime around here, but now people are like, you don't need to work. You know, well, because I'm busy doing that. But, yeah, we do a lot of civilian dogs too, but our niche is police dogs, is what we do. The classes at Delta College are only police dog-related. We're gonna get some classes here, and hopefully, we can sponsor them through the city, and have other agencies come to us, so we can, you know, collaboration is a big deal for us too, so.
Jody, you mentioned that, that the food companies, uh, we said one was in Midland, and the other one was where?
The other one is Canadae. Uh, I'm not sure where they're based out of. Uh, Officer Wenzel was actually in, that was the first donation that we had received. He was in picking up food for, for Kilo, and a rep was there.
Yes, uh, we have a sponsor, no, as well. Only each of, each representative throughout the country will sponsor two police dogs. He already, I believe, he had one in the Flint area, if I'm not mistaken, and then he was looking for another one, so. We took on board with that, got lucky, so I'm not sure we were out of.
So, they, they eat different foods, obviously?
Yes. Y Song is a natural company. They're, they're headquartered out of Midland. Uh, they, we reached out to them because they, both Midland City dogs, they sponsor them. So, we asked, kind of basically, for a little discount on the food, you know? And they said, I don't know what, so give it to you. So, once a month, I go over there, and they climb me with a hundred dollars a month in food, which is more than adequate to feed him, and they will feed him, they said, until he passes away. Even once he retires, they're on board with me. So, they, they do four dogs, one in Minnesota, and now three here in Michigan, locally, so, I mean, they're great.
Well, I have a German Shepherd, so I'm trying to make sure I get some good food for him too.
I, I have three German Shepherds, one work dog, and then two house dogs. And I tell you, my house dogs made a huge difference, just switching over to that food. But, I mean, that's neither here nor there, but, I mean, it really improved their coat and all that. So, I, I'm kind of glad that, you know, these stuff over, because it helped me out personally, so.
So, I can contact you and get some information. Thank you. Great job, really appreciate the support, uh, Jody and, and the organization. I tell you, extremely important service, uh, that the, uh, the canine unit provides to this community in this region. So, I'm, I'm a full supporter of what you guys are doing, and I'm glad to hear all the outside activities, uh, as well as the, uh, day-to-day, uh, operation that you guys do in the community in various locations. So, appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Jody, uh, well, a couple things. I, I just found out it's cheaper to feed the police dog than the teenager. So, that's, that's good, uh, for that. Uh, Jody, um, you, you don't, I'm sensing you don't do this alone. Do you have a board? Do you have a committee? Do you have, uh, and you have people with you?
Not yet.
Joining us today, or what's the?
No, right, it's, it's me and these guys and their spouses, uh, and then my mom. We, my, I, my whole reason for getting involved with this was, uh, in January, two thousand and ten, my nephew was involved with a drug incident in Standish, uh, resulted in, I believe, seven expulsions of students. And then shortly after, it was April that I had lost, my, my brother had passed away from drug use. So, it just kind of became a passion of keeping these units working, reinstating the program that Airneck had. And then, when these guys had reached out to me, they had heard what I was doing in Airneck, and wanted to. I was doing at Airneck, and wanted to keep the program going here. So, right now, it's, we don't have a board, because we're through the Community Foundation. We're nonprofit under their umbrella. Once we break off, then yes, we'll get a board, but primarily, it's just us right now.
Okay, good, good. Well, thank you very much. Boy, it just seems like an awful lot of stuff, and it boils down to just the three people we see standing here and a couple others in the family. So, thank you very much, that's a wonderful presentation. Council members, any other comments, or we're all set? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Dog.
There you go. Yeah.
That's a well-trained dog. He's sat there for a long time.
I hope that wasn't a senior.
Well, thank you again to them for the work they do, because when you look at a number of departments, it's specialized programs like that are the first to go, just because they're an added cost, and both of those officers are patrol as well, but you know, if you look at costs around the country, when you start adding up the vet bills and the food, it gets pretty extensive, so they do a great job, and I'm sure you'll see them at the National Night Out kickoff, too. They usually have a table there if we do that again.
Will we see one at Student Government Day?
We might see two.
Okay.
They're both available.
Yeah, and that's the light out, because we...
As mayor, as mayor, I can appoint here, and I certainly don't want to lean one way or the other, but I sent a volunteer on this side of the table.
Why couldn't he be down here?
So, thank you, thank you.
And that concludes the management update.
And the consent, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city's website, and on SGTV Channel 191. A motion to adopt the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and is supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? One final time, any exceptions? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
And are there any committee reports? Any committee reports? Councilwoman Annie Bench?
Yes, thank you. The City School Liaison Committee met on February 19th after the last council meeting. We were joined by County Commission Chairman Michael Hanley, and also Bill Fetterspiel, and we received an update from Chief Ruth on the pre-prom activities, and we have also extended a formal invitation to the County Commission to continue to send representation, so we hope that continues to occur. Also, the Boards and Commissions meeting is going to be held on March 9th at 10:30 a.m. here at City Hall in Conference Room 104. Yes, approved, so thank you.
And to our city clerk, you'll keep me informed on when we have to replace one of our council members, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. So, beginning of May. Okay, thank you very much. Any other reports from committees, boards, commissions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Tibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to announce that the Crime Free Lease Addendum Subcommittee will be meeting Tuesday, March 10, 2015, between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And, I don't know, it's going to be a little more formal as far as having a public comment, and it's possible that there could be a vote at that particular meeting on the proposal.
To bring it to the council?
Council, yes.
Okay. Any questions on that? Yep. The date again?
I'm sorry, March 10th.
All right. Any other boards, commissions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the appointments one through four, leaving room for exceptions. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Do I have SVSU students with us today, or any students from SVSU? No? Okay. Any business before? Go ahead, Councilwoman Cluck.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to bring up something that perhaps is very low-key at this point.
Has anything to do with a spinning Saginaw?
Well, it can, but those of you who are proud to be a resident of Saginaw can obtain the new Sag, or the new old Saginaw pen.
Yep, absolutely.
They are available, I believe it's through the Downtown Development Authority, has them available, and they can order more if they need them. I think they're a couple dollars apiece, very inexpensive. I find they're great items to hand out to people. And so, if anyone would like, I have some now, if anyone wants any that's here, but also, the only pledge I ask you to do is make sure and promise that you wear it. It doesn't do any good if you leave it in the drawer. But we should be proud. This town is a wonderful city, and it's growing, and it's developing, and it's coming back, and we want to, we should promote it, so. Anyone interested? Myself, I'm sure some of the other council persons have some, and then through the DDA or city manager, I'm sure can steer you the right way. Thank you. That's...
Pardon me?
Twenty-four karat.
Yep.
Okay.
So, anything else? Any other council members? So, at this time, I do want to recognize our SVSU students who are bachelor setting there, and we certainly want to welcome you. If there's any questions that any of us can answer for you or the city staff after the meeting, they are available for you, so. Council members entertain a motion to adjourn. Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Were adjourned.